We're just gonna go ahead and do it. Okay, good. Okay, Dr. Duran, thanks for your patience. I know you've been waiting to do this for how many months? Six months?
This is our fourth attempt.
This is fourth attempt. So we're not gonna postpone. And he's entitled to his full 90 minutes. That's what he's entitled to, but he doesn't really encourage us or expect us to spend all the 90 minutes. So with that in mind, Dr. Francisco, if you could tell us what you are, Dr. Lockhart, you know, what you are expecting to accomplish out of this work session? And do I understand that your presentation is going to be about half an hour? Forty-five minutes? Half an hour, shorten it, okay, thank you. So, Dr. Lockhart.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moon. Yeah, we're excited to finally be able to share the pathways proposal. And it's really timely because not only does it address those goals that are outlined in our strategic plan, but also, as we had a discussion earlier, many of our legislative priorities. It's also an appropriate time because Dr. Duran represents us on the SOL Innovation Committee at the state, where he just came from a meeting Friday. So he has some relevant, timely information. So we're happy to be able to present this to you. I will turn it over to Dr. Duran to outline that as well as introduce folks with us today.
So we're very excited to be here finally, the fourth time. And many of you have been meeting managers who've met with us. I think about four, five, or six of you have already seen this presentation because each time it was a different group of meeting managers. So hopefully for some of you, you'll remember this. But before we start, it is exciting that the team has been working very much on this for quite a while and that I've been able to, also on the SOL Innovation Committee, talk about this work at the state level and how the work that FCPS is doing is really aligned to a lot of the good thinking and has actually influenced some of the next steps at the state level. And before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to read one of the quotes from the SOL Innovations guiding principles that I think has been influenced by this work. And this is one of our charges that we have at the state level. And that's that students need and deserve an education that inspires and leverages their curiosity and natural desire to learn so that they are prepared for responsible citizenship and success beyond high school. So at the state level, we are looking at not only the assessments that you've heard about previously. Really, it was the last iteration of the committee focused on elementary. And now we're looking at high school. So there's two subcommittees. High School Redesign, which we're gonna talk about here, specifically Fairfax County Public Schools are our proposal. And also, we're looking at assessments. And you heard a little bit earlier the conversation. Wanted to clarify a couple of things to put a little number to. Virginia, actually, K-12 requires 29 SOL assessments. The federal requirement is 17. And most states do the federal requirement. So we are quite a bit over. I will say that the promising news about that is on Friday, we did discuss that the State Board of Ed and the president was there, Dr. Kennedy, along with Dr. Staples and Secretary Trent, that the State Board is moving forward with proposals to make to the General Assembly to reduce that number. And so that we would, at the high school level, right now, under ESSA, it's required only one for math, one for English, and one for science. And of course, that's where we have one for every end-of-course assessment. So that's really exciting work that we're doing. And you'll see how it's aligned in a moment to the work that we're asking you to consider today. So we still need your advocacy. And Mr. Moon asked, what do we hope to gain out of this? One thing is so that you're aware and can be advocates for us because when it goes to the General Assembly, we do have General Assembly members on the SOL Innovation Committee, and they're supportive. But there is some possibility that there will be some pushback on it because we did hear concern about reducing the number of SOLs and how it would mean to accountability and return on investment. So some of the Assembly members felt needing more assessments helped them to feel that there was a return on investment because they could feel that then their dollars were best used. So it's just one thing to consider. So today, as you hear, I'm really pleased to have with us, as you all know, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Presidio, who's worked primarily on this with the team, and Director Jen Glazer, who is going to be leading us to the presentation today. And you'll see up on the screen a little bit of what we'd like you to think about as we provide this information. So we want to make sure that we review our requirements so that you're familiar with those, how you can help advocate at the state level, and then also, what are some local decisions that we would need in order to move forward? Because some of them are directly amendments and/or regulations, policies that we would need you to support. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen Glazer, who's gonna walk us through the details. And we would love if you could let us go through the presentation. We hope no longer 30, 40 minutes. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions because some of the questions you might see on one slide will be answered in a slide or two right after. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen and thank her and her team for this great, great work. They've got us a long way in thinking about this, but also putting a proposal that's really manageable, doable, and aligned to the work at the state level.
Okay, thank you. As you make your presentation, if you could, let us know if there are decisions to be made by this board. Let us know the timeframe you'd like us to consider and make a decision by.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Dr. Duran, and thank you for the opportunity to the board to share this proposal with you. I went back to the title slide to remind us that we are looking at a proposal for the year 2018, 19, and beyond. So this is not for next school year, but it is for future planning because we need that long to implement some of these changes. So thank you again to Dr. Duran for providing that relevant information about what's happening at the state. Today's presentation is about a proposal that will increase flexibility for students and align with their interests, hopefully increasing engagement in our schools to give students more opportunities to explore career paths and also meet the graduation requirements while they're in high school. We really are looking for this to be an opportunity to have a positive impact on our academic environment and students overall. This represents a Phase 1 of the work of the multiple pathways that we have in the strategic plan. This is something that can be implemented in the near term, whereas Phase 2 really is about those small tailored schools and programs that will be available to students that will take a few more years for us to research, develop, and create. So as we look at this, again, this is Phase 1 to opening up opportunities that will come in the years following. As Dr. Duran said, there are several roles that we're looking for the board to play through this... Excuse me, thank you. Several roles that the board will need to play in order to support this proposal that we have. First of all, we'll need to take a close look at our local graduation requirements. And that is something, there are a couple of different topics that we'll address specifically that can be decided at our local school board level. And then there is advocacy that will need to happen for general state requirements as well. And that would be advocacy on the part of the school board in collaboration with our team. Key features include the ability for students to have a variety of courses count towards core graduation requirements. So currently, we are limited with the courses that can count for each of our content classes within the graduation requirements. And we're looking to increase that flexibility. And we'll get into a little bit of what that means further into the presentation. We're also looking to help students make relevant connections to career and pathways that will lead them to preparation and exploration while they're in high school. We also have a need to foster additional business partnerships and relationships to increase work-based learning opportunities. We've done some good work with those. Currently, we're exploring Genesis Works, for example, and that program has been very successful in the first year. We need to increase our opportunities for students to connect with our business partners and employees throughout high school so they can get those work-based learning opportunities. So again, just breaking this into two phases. The initial plan is really for the practical implementation and open the door for increased flexibility for graduation requirements to really target career interests and workforce trends to make sure that our course offerings support the workforce needs that we have as well as our student interests. We also, as Dr. Duran mentioned, are looking for ways to align with the state's efforts to have more opportunities for verified credits for students or different opportunities for students to showcase those verified credits so that they are not restrained to the SOLs that we currently have. The Phase 2, again, is where we're looking at the small tailored schools, the additional programs with interdisciplinary learning with project and problem-based learning opportunities embedded in our curriculum in more ways and in very meaningful ways. And then looking at that additional workplace learning and online blended learning will be part of this but will occur over the years to come. This is all part of overarching Strategy 4 and Goal 1, Student Success. So you'll continue to hear about that as we prepare for our Student Success presentation to the board as well. We are looking for students that desired outcome of a portfolio of school options, providing students multiple pathways to a high school diploma. It's important to take a step back and look at the past few years and how graduation requirements have changed for students. We have experienced a time where every grade level in high school has had a different set of graduation requirements. So while there was a core that was similar, school counselors and our school-based teams were tracking for each grade level a different set of graduation requirements. So we continue to get changes for a variety of reasons. When we look back to 2008, a student pursuing a standard high school diploma had the opportunity to pursue 11 elective courses. And now, fast forward, students only have an opportunity to pursue nine elective courses when pursuing a standard diploma. So there have been additional requirements put in place for students to complete in those same four years. We also want to be cognizant with the college debt crisis that we're giving students opportunities to earn college credits while in high school and really not limit their exploration of different career pathways while they're in high school and don't have to pay for those courses. Whereas if they save that for the college level, there would be a high cost potentially associated with that. When we look at how high school graduation requirements are created, we look at both the General Assembly, the Board of Education, and then third, at our local school board and how we create graduation requirements for our division. So to give some background, first, the first step lies with the Virginia General Assembly. They can write specific graduation requirements into state code. They can also delegate to the Virginia Board of Education that specific requirements are decided by the Board of Education. When we think about things that are written into code, we think about that economics and personal finance requirement. That's a requirement that comes from code as well as the CTE course requirement that students have to complete. We now also have the AED, First Aid and CPR, and a virtual course requirement that we're required to have through the General Assembly. It's also important to note the General Assembly can override any Virginia Board of Education action. So there is a multi-layer process to deciding and approving any graduation requirements that there are. After the General Assembly, the next step goes to the Board of Education, and they interpret the General Assembly's actions. And they create the specific diploma requirements that Virginia schools can follow. They also specify which courses and assessments can be used by divisions to meet those requirements. Then this gives the local school boards the ability to determine what courses we offer in our high schools, to determine some of the course sequences, to develop those local graduation requirements that may be specific to a division, and to create policy for any requirements and advocacy that might be designated to them by the Virginia Board of Education. In the case of this proposal, we are again requesting that we review our local graduation requirements, specifically the requirements that we have for the standard diploma in social studies and science. For the local school board, again, we're requesting that there's consideration for an additional diploma seal to be added for the pathway proposal that we have for students. And you'll hear more about each of those as we go through. When we look at our design principles, first and foremost, we need to address the goals that are outlined in the strategic plan and the legislative priorities that were shared and reviewed again earlier. The proposal also needs to address the additional flexibility that doesn't limit a student's post-secondary opportunities. So what that means is this is an opportunity for all students but not a requirement for any student. It also means that a student who is pursuing an advanced studies diploma could choose to pursue one of these brainstormed pathways or could choose not to and take a variety of classes from multiple different career clusters or interest areas. Third, the proposal truly needs to align with workforce trends in our area and across our nation. We also took a strong look at FCPS student interests that are indicated through the Student Learning Plan and our Naviance Family Connection system and also the current courses that we have offered we're taking into consideration for this proposal. So when we look back over the past couple of years, I know there have been conversations at leadership team level and also with school board and leadership team joint retreats about how to increase the flexibility for students and to really look at these connections to career. Specifically, on October 16th, the leadership team reviewed and discussed the existing high school graduation requirements. The workforce... This was last October 16th, excuse me. So it wasn't two weeks ago. I just realized that was back in March when I wrote that date. So they did meet to review the high school graduation requirements, the workforce trends, and the career interest survey results as well as the course offerings. And from that work, they brainstormed some bucket areas that we could look at for these pathways. So there has been quite a bit of conversation. We're excited to be able to look at that deeper today. And finally, this proposal was designed to align with the National Career Cluster Model, which is supported by K-12 higher education and business and industry partners. In this proposal, it encompasses some proposed substitutions, waivers, and credits for each of the pathways that we've brainstormed. And this is broken down by what we would need to propose to VDOE, what would be a local school board decision, and then we'll look at the description of the pathways. So the proposals for VDOE, we would need to put together proposals for substitute courses, specifically looking at English 12, math, science, world history, and world language. So some of those upper-level courses. What could students take instead of the prescribed current courses that are in alignment with the graduation requirements? We also would propose industry certifications to count in place of verified credits for science and social studies. Again, it's in partnership with the work that's happening at VDOE. So we would work very closely with the team and also with our colleagues in Richmond before making a proposal. For the local school board, for our decision, our proposal to you is that we look closely at the world history requirements that we have locally. And there is a reference slide or a reference document available for you on Board Docs to compare the Virginia requirements with the current FCPS standard diploma requirements. So looking specifically at the world history requirement. In FCPS, there is a local requirement for a second world history requirement that does not exist for a standard diploma in Virginia. Secondly, we're looking at the third science discipline, not the third science credit, but the third science discipline. So we have earth science, physics, chemistry, and biology. Thank you, as our four disciplines. Currently, FCPS students have to take at least three of those. And we would be looking for consideration to have students only have to take two disciplines but still earn three total credits. So again, there's a reference slide to walk you through that. With the description of the pathways, we have brainstormed pathways that would allow students the opportunity to earn a minimum of four credits in a career cluster or career area. And that, once completed, could earn a student a diploma seal that says that they've successfully completed a career pathway or a graduation pathway. Again, as a note, our advanced studies diploma requires 26 credits. A student would still have to earn 26 credits to get an advanced studies diploma. However, there would be an opportunity within those credits to get one of these pathways. As we reviewed these proposals and created them, I want to point out that there, again, as with Phase 2 that I mentioned, there is ongoing research and consideration needed for large chunks of topics that have been brought up and discussed in different forums. So we are still advocating for flexibility with the requirement for upper-grade transfer students in Virginia to have some opportunity to either waive or substitute something for that economics and personal finance course, the CTE industry credential, and the virtual course. Currently, in Virginia, not just in FCPS, but in Virginia, a student who transfers even as late as senior year would have to get each of these in order to graduate. So there is a need for continued advocacy with that and those requirements. We also continue to develop and brainstorm different ways for computer coding and to count for credits for graduations. So that's another ongoing topic. Physical education substitutions for athletes has been discussed, and we'll continue to research that over the years to come. And then finally, the 140 clock hour policy waiver is another item that will continue to be discussed. And we'll look for ways to advocate for flexibility there.
Real quickly, that's a state requirement, and they're rethinking that as well, the 140. It's really measuring seat time for those high school credit courses.
Yes, thank you. So we'll spend the next few slides reviewing the proposed pathway options for students. And this is a list of the 16 career clusters that are included in the career cluster model. It truly represented an ideal framework for these pathways because it is supported by K-12, higher ed, and our business and industry partners. It also promotes the connections between academic standards and the industry-recognized skills. One of the attachments for this presentation includes a list of our FCPS elective courses broken down by career cluster. So you can see where we have a high concentration of electives currently available and where we don't have as many. That is pretty typical of... The pattern aligns with workforce trends. You can see that there are more in areas that have higher workforce needs locally. Virginia was an early adopter of this career cluster model, which makes it another good framework for the presentation and the proposal. And it's also currently being used in our Naviance and Family Connection software and program that our students use to explore careers. As you know, the focus on career clusters extends beyond K-12 education and beyond higher ed. Is within the Commonwealth of Virginia, there's a focus on better alignment between school systems and education and workforce. So the four pathways that we have are listed on this next slide here. It's arts and communication, business management and administration, health sciences, science, technology, engineering, and math. And these are the four pathways that we've designed to align with the most available elective courses and the student interests and workforce trends. Again, these do not replace the standard or advanced studies diplomas in any way. They're provided as additional course options, and it is not required for a student to pursue one of these. As such, this, again, needs to be implemented no earlier than the 2018 and 2019 year, school year because of the additional flexibility and considerations that we need to pursue from the Department of Education. The next few slides have a listing of courses that are available in FCPS that could align with each of our pathways. They're small font, but hopefully you can see on the arts and communication, the sample courses. It includes all of our fine and performing arts. It also has some courses that cross into our academy offerings and English electives. For business management and administration, again, we have some sample courses. We have a note that we could expand this pathway to include additional coursework such as that of finance, HR, and marketing, which while they're in different career clusters in the model, this could be expanded so we could allow more students the opportunity to pursue a pathway. The health sciences courses, there are several listed here as well. You'll note that many of these courses are offered at the local school. However, there are some that would need to be accessed through an academy model because not all of these health sciences courses are offered at every high school. And then finally, our STEM has the smallest font because there are the most courses that could potentially be relevant in this career pathway. Again, students would have the option to pursue one of these pathways, or they could continue to pursue a variety of electives across the different career clusters and career interest areas. What's not listed here and hasn't been developed yet but is a part of the later plan as well is trying to create additional work-based learning opportunities within each of these career clusters. So perhaps an internship opportunity for junior or senior year that's related to this career. Each of these career pathways could be developed before the students reach junior or senior year. Who would start this? But Dr. Duran already mentioned the relevant state actions, some of the relevant state action. There is currently a comprehensive review of the SOA, and that's a review of all the required courses, the verified credits, and the diploma requirements. There was a talk of combining our diplomas so that there was a Virginia diploma. Right now, the current proposal does keep standard and advanced studies diplomas separate. So again, this model aligns with a student who was pursuing either a standard diploma or an advanced studies diploma and would be available to either of them. So in addition to these items, there are links to the High School Redesign website as well as the profile of the Virginia graduate and the SOL Innovation Committee links are here as well. To fully implement the FCPS proposal, the FCPS School Board would need to take board action as well as advocate for changes with VDOE. The majority of these items are on hold as VDOE continues to work on their high school redesign and makes those decisions on the graduation requirements. Yet, it's important to consider the changes that may be needed as we get further instruction from them. Many of these concepts and items were discussed, again, during the summer of 2015. There was a joint leadership team and school board retreat. And there was conceptual agreement to these ideas at the time. As guidance develops, in Richmond, we'll respond appropriately and seek for regulation changes that may be in line with what comes from Richmond. Examples of where the board support may be needed depending on the changes that are made, and this is the most timely of the things that could be considered prior to any additional guidance from Richmond, is the look at the FCPS local graduation requirements. And with that, it would be the elimination of the second world history requirement for a standard diploma and then the elimination of that third discipline for science. The impact of eliminating the local requirements will require instructional services to review our existing course sequencing and course offerings as well as our prerequisite requirements in order to expand course options for students. The proposal to eliminate the second world history and third science area still do support that students could pursue four years of each of these courses. So it doesn't mean that automatically students would not take four years of a social studies or four years of a science. Instructional services will continue to work on a regulation and continue to update as that policy work is being discussed about the 140 clock hour policy. We'll continue to do our work on the 140 clock hour policy for our local requirements as well.
And down the road, if that requirement were lifted, then the schools could consider seminar-like courses that wouldn't require entire semester potentially. So you could see how those could be built in. I just wanted to emphasize, up above, we're talking about approving additional courses that could fulfill the requirements of these. For an example, English 12. If you were pursuing a communications degree, we have a number of courses you could see in there that would be very rigorous courses that could take the place of that. If you're pursuing the STEAM or STEM area in science, some of your cybersecurity courses that we offer that are very rigorous, that right now, all of these are counting as electives, that could satisfy some of these requirements. Do you see where we're kind of going with that? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so to fully implement the FCPS proposal, the Virginia Board of Education will need to take action on several items. First, the board would need to approve the additional list of courses as some of the examples that Dr. Garza just highlighted. Second, we would need approval of the additional assessments that Dr. Duran mentioned at the start of this. For example, if a CTE course is approved as a science, like that cybersecurity course, if it's approved as a science course, the associated credential could account towards the verified credit for a student for graduation. And then third, the board would need to approve the addition of cooperative education or work-based learning courses associated with each of these pathway options.[1643.34] work-based learning courses associated with each of these pathway options. They don't currently exist outside of business and marketing at the state level, but we are seeking opportunities for students to earn credit on those work-based learning As far as implementation, it is understood that all comprehensive high schools would be able to offer enough courses for a student to pursue one of these pathways. That could mean that a student is taking courses at an academy and at their base school, or in some of the pathway options, a student could just be taking classes at a base school. So we do anticipate that this would be an option for all of our students. In order to move forward, if the proposal is accepted, we would need to provide education and communication to all of our stakeholders. And we would have several systems, including graduation requirements, tracking systems that would need to be updated in order to support these pathways. And finally, we would truly need to focus on that increased engagement with our business and community partners to ensure that we have opportunities for students onsite. The next steps, we would be looking to bring a recommendation about the flexibility and the local requirements to you as the board. We would also be looking to bring you a proposal for VDOE to consider some of these other flexible options that we've outlined and the pathways that we've brainstormed as well. Then we would be waiting on the state advocacy in response to them, as well as getting prepared for staff and community education. Again, in order to fully implement this for the 2018-19 school year, we need a lot of advance notice. So we would have to have everything approved by October of next year. So a little less than a year from now, we would need to have approval of any changes to our local graduation requirements, as well as any notification on the changes from the state-level requirements. So with that...
And as we're moving forward, just so you're aware, in terms of the advocacy role, House Bill 525 is the House bill that is being considered. And the sponsors of that bill are, they're asking the S.L. Innovation Committee to give our feedback. Much of what we talked about in terms of the VDOE's need to make some actions will be seen hopefully by, after the end of the next assembly, we'll get a session, we'll get to see. But House Bill 525, I wanted you to make sure you had that, so that you can follow that, and we will provide you more information on that. But that is one of the most critical pieces of legislation right now at the state level for much of what we're talking about in terms of the assessment work, the verified credits, not necessarily the substitution of courses. That's not in there. That's something we would need to do a proposal for. But the other aspect with regards to the assessment and the verified credits is really much a part of House Bill 525. And also, we would love to, when we open it up for questions and comments, to hear your feedback on the local action needed with regards to the World History and the Third Science, if you have questions on that and/or get a sense of the board, what your feelings on that, because that's also very critical to the work.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm sure the board members have a lot to comment on and ask questions about. I'm gonna hold on to mine until later, but I want to remind board members that we have another topic after this. We already have people, you know, waiting to make a presentation and answer questions. And since we are already fifteen minutes behind, a lot of time for this one, that let me see whether we can finish this, though later than 5:30, so that we can go to ERFC to 5:30 until 6:30. So we'll be done by 6:30. I'm hoping for my colleagues' cooperation in that regard. So I'll be pretty mean when it comes to a 5:20, I'm gonna stop for the next steps. I'm gonna, that's gonna be a hard stop for the next steps, and then we'll be done by 9:00, 5:30 for this one. So with that, I have five board members already on my list. Palchek, Corbin Sanders, Heinz, Strauss, McLaughlin. Ms. Palchek.
Thank you so much. It's good to finally see this officially. I do, I guess, a couple, I'll be brief, Mr. Moon. On the advocacy side, I'm glad you had it at the end. I was just thinking, can we get our business partners, Genesis Works, and others onboard? You know, I know our businesses go down to advocate often in Richmond. So if there's a way, and this can be, you have suggestions later for us for how to best engage them, because I was pretty upset to hear this was slowing down. I thought we had more momentum from the Board of Education. So please let us...
I don't think it's slowing down necessarily.
Oh, you think it is going to slow?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I haven't had any indication that it's been slowing down at all. I mean, actually, they're really aggressive about wanting to get some changes made, particularly with the new S.A. regulations having to come out. So that's, and that's in March, there'll be some alignment to that. So I haven't heard any slowing down personally.
And there's a high degree of commitment by Dr. Steve Staples to move this along. I think slower...
And President, Dr. Kennedy at the Board.
I may have misunderstood Mr. Malloy earlier, so I apologize.
I was just gonna mention to Ms. Palchek's point about trying to get some community and business leaders to support us. I think the next step for us is to make sure that we have consensus about the board's position with respect to some of these items. And then we can craft our policy position around that in terms of our requests for waivers, and those are things that we can ask business and community leaders to sign on with us.
Okay, so there's not pushback for the board to make those changes to the high school requirements? The state board, it seems that they're moving forward?
The state board, according to Dr. Kennedy, is very much in support of this work.
Okay.
I think, if I could, my interpretation of Mr. Malloy's comments was around the number of assessments that some legislators wanted to ensure that maybe we would retain some of the assessments that a lot of folks in the education community are suggesting that we dismiss at this point. So I think it was really more around the tests.
That is correct, around the return on investment.
And here, we're not recommending eliminating any tests, we're recommending creating more flexibility, because as Dr. Duran mentioned at the beginning, you know, not only do we have more tests already in the state of Virginia than most states and school divisions have around the country, we also have a more standardized approach to high school graduation than most states have. So we have a very standardized, one-size-fits-all approach. And this recommendation is all about creating more choice and more flexibility for students. And what we're suggesting is that we would substitute requirements, not eliminate requirements, and substitute tests, not eliminate tests.
Okay, no, that's good. Then with that, I can definitely support this. My only two asks are that I love that Dr. Staples and his team have a plan, how to have a pipeline from elementary up. I think it was exposure, then exploration, and then alignment. So I hope we won't be stopping at the high school, but we will be reaching out more. And I've heard actually from the business community locally, they'd like to help us get more girls into STEM fields earlier on before high school. So I do hope that's the next step. And for the first question you're asking about eliminating those two requirements, you know, change is always hard. I think it sounds great. I'm sure there will be pushback. But just if we can have a better plan and communication as to what that means, that we're not just eliminating them, what the other courses are that will be able to take their place, as long as, you know, that's all communicated and cohesion, it's not, we wanna get rid of this and we don't have a plan, but why it gives more options for seminars and other courses. But thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbin Sanders to be followed by Ms. Heinz.
Thank you very much. I thought this was a great presentation. And I too am all for increasing flexibility for our students so that they can especially explore career opportunities without the high cost of paying for them in college. I have a couple of questions. One is in the, do you envision allowing students to double count credits? Not towards their overall graduation requirements, but for example, if a child were to pursue the pathway to an IT seal, would they be able to count their coding, which is, would be used in their math requirement, to also count it towards their coding concentration of four credits?
Yes, that, it would definitely be open for consideration for that. Now, as you mentioned, it wouldn't double count necessarily for the graduation requirement, but for the pathway requirement, absolutely.
That's great. Thank you very much. Additionally, I was wondering whether you had plans on adding additional pathways, and I'll tell you why. Here in the northern Virginia region, and in the Mount Vernon and Lee area in particular, the highest growth for employment is likely going to be in the travel and tourism area, especially since there are two, three museums opening up, plus we have increased opportunities at Woodlawn. And so I see your long list of career clusters, but we're only focusing on four. So I'd like to understand a little bit more how you chose those four versus others. And then my last question, actually two, so I'll give them both to you, is are these opportunities for the clusters, is it better suited for a child to pursue them in an IB curriculum environment or an AP curriculum environment? And then the last piece of that is, what is this going to do to our master scheduling?
Well, let me address maybe the first, and then Jen and I can address the second and third question. So I think your first question was around why we chose these four particular pathways. And it was really an attempt to not say that these are the only four that we would want to do, but it was an attempt to try to expedite some flexibility and some choice, and to try to really work with the state to create some new pathways and some new models based on the breadth of offerings that we already have in our system. Because whenever we add new programs, we have new curriculum, there's new professional development costs. So there's a lot of expenses when we start something that's entirely new. And what we wanted to do was try to start with things that we've already got in place in terms of a solid infrastructure that we could build on. So that's why we selected those first four pathways. We definitely would want to continue to work with the board and the community to look at additional opportunities. The other thing that we talked about with the Phase Two is really starting to think about personalizing experiences for kids. So Dr. Garza had mentioned, you know, if we can get outside of this 140 clock hour seat time rule, and if we can start to look at internship opportunities and community-based work experience opportunities and expand those in terms of credit requirements, we can start to personalize experiences for students where students might be able to actually design some things, some learning experiences outside of what we do in the county to supplement and add credits on top of the courses that they would take in the county. So then we could customize and personalize some things. So we definitely want to start with where we've got a strong foundation and continue to build and expand from there.
And you had a question about whether it's more suited for an AP or an IB school?
Before you go to the next question, I just also want to say too, I find that when you try to change policy or thinking at the state level, if we started with saying we need, we need the option for students to take and get diplomas in all of these 16 areas, it would have overwhelmed everyone, because most of our school systems in Virginia are small. So it's like, let's start with some that everyone largely can support, and then build over time. We're probably one of the few school systems that probably could do pretty much all of them, but we probably wouldn't get anywhere with some of the policy flexibility we want if we started with that conversation in that way. I'm sorry, your next part of your question?
Well, that's why I raised the question about the travel and tourism, because that is such a significant part of our workforce development in the state. So that's why I was wondering why it wasn't listed as one that we would be focusing on, because it would have greater traction beyond just this area.
We can continue to look at that. We'll have to expand course offerings in order to have a full pathway and options available to the students within that. But I think it's a great point. Your question about the AP or IB school, either school would be appropriate, and even schools or students who are pursuing an IB diploma would be able to potentially pursue one of these pathways. So we're not, in this proposal, expecting schools to change their course offerings or add additional courses or have a need for additional staffing. It would be really to respond to the students' course requests and adjust as they do annually based on that. But it wouldn't be asking them to create additional singletons or anything that would cause complications for the master schedule.
I would add to that, though. I mean, students that are pursuing a full IB diploma and are already taking six or seven core academic subjects, obviously already have made choices about the electives and the core courses that they're gonna take. So they have fewer opportunities for electives when they're selecting the full diploma program. But that's the case now, so.
So the impact on the master schedule should be similar to the impact that they consider every year when they're going through the students' course requests. I don't anticipate that it would cause complications or create additional singletons. However, when we look further down the road at course substitutions, such as what Dr. Garza mentioned with an English 12 course substitution or cybersecurity for a math or a science, then there, yes, there may be a growth in the number of sections that schools offer for one of those substitute courses versus one that we've traditionally used to satisfy the requirement. But we would hope that we would be able to balance that in master schedules.
Thank you. I have Ms. Heinz to be followed by Ms. Strauss, Mrs. McLaughlin, and Dr. Corvax and myself.
Okay, staying on this slide, this is a fascinating slide, right? Because I'm looking at it and saying, okay, education and training, we earlier today talked about how, you know, we have trouble recruiting, and there's a teacher shortage, and we really ought to be starting in high school. So that'd be another one we might be interested in. And then government and public administration, that seems like such an obvious one for us up here. So am I understanding correctly that this list here, if the state would enable all of these, then local school districts in Virginia could choose which ones to offer? No, how does this work?
So this is a national model that defines career clusters. We looked within that national model and made this proposal specific to FCPS. So the request that we have to the state is that we could use substitute courses and that we could have pathways. And they're looking for proposals such as this, but they are not asking for applications for it, if that makes sense.
I see. So they might not, we're hoping that they will be receptive to what we're suggesting. And if we go too far afield, we may overwhelm their willingness to work with us. Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you. Just a couple of things. The idea of introducing that flexibility in history and science coursework, I think sounds like a really reasonable first step here that will give students more of the flexibility we want. So I, you know, again, communicate it in a way so everybody understands what we're doing. I think it's a great idea. Looking at Slide Four, the strategic plan, if you don't mind going back to that for just a sec, kind of looking to see, because you've got, we've got Phase One and Phase Two, all right? I'm just trying to fit this all together. So Phase One, how does, how do Phase One and Phase Two fit into this page from our strategic plan? And where are we looking at the three-dollar sign item there?
So the Phase Two is the three-dollar sign item, where we're looking at those small tailored schools and programs. And we've heard about a variety of ideas for different schools like that. We also have an example at Edison, currently with the Global STEM Challenges Program of a new pathway. It's an innovative program that was supported by the High School Planning Innovation Grant. That's the type of example that we're looking to expand, not necessarily that content area, but what other types of opportunities can we provide to students in that Phase Two? And that's the, that's the three-dollar sign versus the pathway options that we're presenting, that's minimal cost, and it's looking at their local graduation requirements and opportunities to get that graduation diploma seal.
And I'll say Phase One and Phase Two maybe doesn't apply as much as it did when we first developed this presentation to bring it to the board back in February. At that point in time, we were really trying to move the flexibility issues forward faster. Since we haven't been able to bring the presentation to the board, some of the things that are in Phase Two actually have been happening before things that are listed in Phase One. So Jen mentioned the things that we're doing in Edison. We've also been having conversations with Inova about some things that would be really innovative with a small tailored high school there. And that's where you start to see larger dollar signs when you think about facilities costs and things like that, transportation costs, equipment costs. Those are the things that add up in terms of dollar signs. But things like we've done at Edison, very little additional cost for what we're doing right now. So we've kind of, we've kind of jumped some of these things in Phase Two ahead, a little bit of things that are listed here in Phase One.
That sounds great. But when we see dollar signs, board members, you know, we think, okay, strategic thinking about budgeting as well, is right. So I'm sure, just a couple of other things. I think that Slide Six, where you talk about how this idea is appropriate for all students, if that's where I'm supposed to be, anyway, oh, does not limit variety of post-secondary opportunities. I think that's a really important thing in this community, because one of the challenges I think we have is that anything that looks like it's pushing kids into a track that's not college, career, professional, is not, is seen as not good enough or somehow, and it just doesn't get any interest or not enough interest. So I love this idea that these pathways are for everybody now and keep open doors, don't close doors for kids. So I think that's an important thing to keep emphasizing.
And keep in mind too, if we were able to provide some of this flexibility, some students will be able to take more rigorous choices than they currently do, because it's very constrained what electives they have to take, and what they, in many cases, what courses they have to take to meet graduation requirements. Some students would elect to take more science and math if they had the opportunity to take, in their schedule, take more science and math. So I don't see it as lessening the rigor. I see it as continuing to emphasize rigor, but rigor that students want in certain pathways.
Good, so maybe I'll just stop mentioning that altogether. I know it will not get in anyone's mind. But no, I just, in general, thank you very much. I think the idea of taking some of the great courses that we have that now don't kind of count, and making them count and giving that flexibility is a hugely important job. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to give a time check to my colleagues. It's five o'clock, we have 21 minutes. I have Mrs. Strauss to be followed, Mrs. McLaughlin. With that in mind, 20 minutes left, then I may have to limit the number of questions you ask. I'm sure a lot of questions you already had on your mind have been asked. Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. This is very exciting, and I hope it actually comes to pass this time. And 20 to 25 years ago, there was a huge change nationwide in education, wanting to require more standard core courses. Well, that was great. I was on a committee in Fairfax County called Frame Up for Fairfax Future, and we required more staff. It's also when we invented this Seventh Period Day. But then, as more requirements came along, you couldn't fit anything in. And what I think is critical with this is that we have many CTE courses, particularly in STEM, STEAM, and anything that's technology-related, that has become much more rigorous, and the work world has become much more rigorous looking for those skills. And until we can provide enough flexibility in our high school requirements, rather than, you know, pushing more specific courses, this proposal allows for course sequences, in many cases, in very rigorous courses that are new because the world has changed. And if we can get the state to back off on seat time, on not, and particularly allowing more of these particularly rigorous CTE courses count for math and science, communication and the arts and technology, oh my, kids will actually be able to acquire more knowledge and skill before they leave high school. And with partnerships with, with college, community college, incredible... incredible partnerships with Inova, that will be very exciting when we see that one come forward and what's going on at Edison. So this opens the door to, for greater learning, more rigor, more opportunities for all kids. And it would be also nice if we, right, could subsidize, and when we were talking with Michael Malloy, substitute industry certifications for SOLs. Because many of the industry certifications are more difficult than what the SOLs are. This, this really gives kids learning that is really tied to a substantial future that really makes sense for everybody. So thank you very much. Where I suspect the pushback is going to come, because I already hear it, is on the social studies. And so my, my one question is, if we can get the state to pull back, would we change the content of the World Studies I course? Because right now, it is taught as a two-year sequence. So what would we have to do with that? Whether or not we can overcome what I know would be the pushback on that? That's my one question.
Before I answer that question, I do want to say that we are working with the State Board to, the SL Innovation Committee, to amend the standards of accreditation to include those different assessments. So we're actually being asked for what might those be? So we are working on that. And I think you will see some of that action very, very soon. In terms of the world language course?
The world history.
World history, excuse me.
So with the world history, we'd have to look at a variety of options. And we do currently have world history I and II, and then honors, AP and IB content that counts for each of those. So again, this proposal is about creating flexibility. And if we needed to look at an additional course offering that would encompass a larger portion of history in order to give students exposure to that, then we could consider looking at that as well for an additional option. But this is really about flexibility. It's not about limitation, even in world history.
Yes, and remember, it's about, for our standard diploma only, requiring what the state requires. We go beyond what the state requires in social studies. And then on the science side, we're not, we're not reducing the number of courses. We're reducing the number of disciplines that those courses have to represent. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Right, because then a student could take a course sequence, a CTE course sequence in a health field or in coding or in computer technology. So they would not have to have a third field. They would still have three courses, but they could take, right, they would get deeper into one field, which makes sense.
Correct. And even within our current science offerings, they may perhaps be able to take an advanced level course that they otherwise would not have been able to pursue because they were stuck trying to pursue a third discipline. So they would be able to dive deeper within that. And also, I think it's important to note that our social studies elective offerings are so vast. We have so many students who, if they weren't taking a second world history, would still stay within that social studies domain and would still be looking to pursue an elective within that content.
And I know a lot of athletes would love to be able to substitute athletic activity for a PE course. That would really open up a whole nother opportunity. Very controversial, but I know a lot of athletes would love it.
Thank you. I have Mrs. McLachlin next.
Okay, I do appreciate what Ms. Heinz brought up on the slide where we were looking at some of the cost associated with this. And I, you know, certainly noted that small tailored schools, again, sounds very nice. But when you see three-dollar signs that translate to eight to 15 million dollars, and I assume that's annually, that you're, it's going to increase the cost for having those, you know, you've got transportation, you've got the facility needs and the instructors required. So that, this timeline worries me a little bit because that's not that very far away. And I sort of feel like with this work session, we can be excited about all of this in concept. But, you know, as Ms. Heinz pointed out, I mean, it comes with a price tag. And I guess, Dr. Garza, my question would be, if we're all excited in concept, do we run the risk that you all leave and go, well, they blessed it, and two years from now, you better be ready for another eight to 15 million dollars to fund it? Or?
That's why we were reticent to put the dollar signs, because we can't, we can't do any things that were, any of the things that you're talking about without board approval. Okay, what we're talking about today has nominal cost. What this particular item suggested or suggest is that a large school system like ours with 199 schools, we have very few choices for our high school kids particularly. It's very rare to see a school system this size that have two alternative schools. Okay? And all we, I think, when we had these discussions before, we see that there would be more opportunity for students to have more choice. Let me give you an example. We have conceptually been talking with Inova about a school around personalized translational medicine, the study of the genome, which would be the first of its kind anywhere in the world, actually. Would that have some dollar signs associated with it? Yes, but guess what? As we talk more and more with Inova and with the business community, you know, I don't want to get quoted here, but there's a lot of people that want to support it.
Sure.
Okay, so I don't ultimately think there's going to be a lot of cost for the school, even with that. But that's kind of far down the road. It would require board approval. So I don't think worry for the dollar amount should worry you today. We're not asking for a huge expenditure of dollars. But down the road, I think this board has suggested that where we can and where we can afford it, let's have some, some more choices for our kids. Besides Thomas Jefferson.
Absolutely.
You know, I think that's what was contemplated there. So I'm glad you went back and clarified that and provided us opportunity to clarify if anyone misunderstood that.
I, I mean, I was just talking with a partner at a top-five consulting firm over the weekend. And he was saying how cybersecurity is at its highest demand possible, that their firm alone has over 150 vacancies, high-paying positions. So seeing that up there alone is a perfect example where trying to help expose students at the high school level so that then they decide whether to go to career or college. I mean, they start to understand these different pathways. It's, it's a little late to learn about in college.
Well, we are, I'm excited to say, I think we've written to you on this, but we're expanding coding at the elementary school. It's our plan to have coding offered at every elementary school throughout this division. We're expanding our cyber patriot cybersecurity programming to all of our middle schools, which I think will be the only school system in the United States that's offering it at the middle school. And then we're expanding it all throughout our high schools. In fact, I think we were named one of only five Centers for Excellence for cybersecurity training for kids. Because of your point, there's a lot of jobs. I think the governor says 30,000 to 40,000 job openings in cyber. So, but, but the challenge is, those courses are so rigorous. Right now, they count as electives for our kids at the high school level. But my goodness, the rigor, and there's this industry certification tied to them. So this helps, I believe, with that.
And I, I mean, to the macro level of this entire conversation, not only did I enjoy it very much and appreciate where we really are trying to show some 21st century, you know, innovation about how we deliver public education. I mean, right now, when I watch my own children getting the same education that I got, that I know my parents got, and I'm pretty sure my grandparents got it, I mean, we just haven't really, yeah, it's, it's very, it's antiquated, quite frankly. And so this is, you know, I always know the push-pull between wanting to make sure we, again, have a strong liberal arts foundation for all our kids. But the notion that we're just not putting every single kid into the same block of, you know, of rote course structure is, it, it's very exciting to see the 10th largest school system embarking on this. And then I will just finally add that I know it wasn't really a big piece of the presentation, but it ties in so beautifully what we just talked about earlier. And I want it to be burned into the memory bank of all of my colleagues sitting around here. Seventeen standards of learning are required by the federal government, and Virginia's doing 29. I mean, we could cut them almost in half and provide remarkable relief. So that is so powerful to me. I want to figure out how, starting yesterday, we can really hammer home on that. We, we cannot, you know, wait too much longer. And the state could save money if we stopped doing all this unnecessary assessments. And the money being a small piece aside, the ability to restore passion and excitement for learning for our teachers and our kids cannot be underestimated. And that's, that is where we've got to light a fire and get this done. So really, again, thank you all for it. And my final plug is not just computer coding as an example of where you're not going to take a foreign language. What it takes to do computer coding is like a foreign language. So having that latitude is key. Calculus is not the math that a vast majority of individuals in any career need. It's great for STEM, but, you know, my boys took calculus because that was the rigorous course to take. But they had no real reason for it once they headed off to college. And so I love this idea that opening up ways for analytical courses that are more meaningful to our students.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to Mr. Kofex, and then we have Ms. Hoff. Hopefully, hopefully, that is it. We will be running out of time in seven minutes. Thank you.
All right, I'll be very quick then. Most of my questions were answered. I just want to say, I'm so excited about these opportunities that you're bringing forward to us. I think I was the meeting manager when we first got braved in. And so here we are. So I'm like, I know about this already. So thank you all. You know, it, it's amazing what opportunities we have available to our students currently. To broaden that will only be more spectacular. I see so many things here that, you know, are, are going the right way and on the right path. I am slightly concerned, and I can take this offline, about the IB schools. And some of those, we, we talked about that in our session. And, you know, some of the IB courses are two-year, two-year-long courses, particularly the social studies. And I think we need to be mindful, and I, I would like to have that conversation continue and...
I'd be happy to follow up with you on that.
Okay, I, I think that's important because you talk about nervous dollar signs. I have been hearing from so many of my IB administrators that, you know, they would love the eight-block day back because of all the requirements that are, you know, necessary because of what they are required to take in the diploma and the extracurricular opportunities that they, they can't have, even beginning in middle school with the, with the middle years IB program and how that, you know, and while we talk about what the portrait of a graduate is, it is, you know, the IB curriculum is very much part of that. And, and I've been a supporter, and I don't want that to change. But what I, what I would not want to happen in our IB schools is to have even a bigger menu and less opportunity to taste from that bigger menu.
Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up with you on that. I think there's some misconceptions about IB scheduling that we could kind of clear up, so.
I'll be happy to do that. I'll schedule that time because I think it's important that I'm able to understand and communicate that.
Thank you. Ms. Hoff? Mrs. Hoff?
So I have some questions that, I guess, I love to sort of see the other side of, why wouldn't we be doing this? Because it sounds great, and I know you're asking us to consider it. And it sounds good to me. I can't, can't come up with a reason not to do it. But, but what are some of the pushbacks on implementing these? What, how, are the teachers very excited about this? Do they have any concerns? So, yeah, what are some of the caveats to consider?
You know, I, I mean, I think it's a good question. I, I think there's some, you know, there probably will be some, well, as Dr. Duran says, change is always hard, right? I, I think there will be some questions about, you know, changing the science requirements or changing the world history requirements because people get really committed to the things that we're doing and how we've been doing things before. So I think that's one thing. I think there will be questions, and they already came up around the table about, you know, competition for different programs. And, you know, will students have the same opportunity to access all of the same programs? And those are things that we would have to work out. I think there's probably, you know, questions that came up around the table about the scheduling, and schools are going to need more support from central office to help with master scheduling. But the vast majority of the feedback that we've received overwhelmingly is positive about wanting to provide more choice and more flexibility for students because of where we have been going as a school system towards Portrait of a Graduate and really thinking about trying to personalize our approach to education and get away from a standardized, one-size-fits-all approach to education. So change is always hard, and those implementation challenges will be there. But the reason that we're doing it, to help students realize those Portrait of a Graduate attributes and skills, get kids engaged in the learning experiences while they're in high school, provide them with opportunities to think about career experiences before they go off to college, all of those things far outweigh the challenges, I think, with respect to implementation.
Okay. The only other one I would add that we've been hearing quite a bit is a misconception that this is taking students off of rigorous coursework and thinking that this is about lowering standards or that we're not preparing them for college. Or, you know, that's what we've been hearing, and it's a misconception. So it's a big piece around communication and helping people to understand, well, if you're going to take away an SOL and you're going to have an industry certification, well, that's, that's not the same equivalent when, in fact, in many cases, it's even more rigorous. So that's a big pushback that I've heard being, you know, especially at the state level, we've actually heard people come, they have public comment, and they come saying, why are you doing this? We have such high standards in Virginia, you're lowering them by doing this. And it's not true. But I think that's a messaging that we'll need to work on.
Beyond messaging, I think, I, I think that, too, I hope that in this big change, we will have set benchmarks and metrics we're looking at so that we can, that we could say, this is how we're proving that increase in rigor.
Absolutely.
And then, is this concept and the flexibility going to be extended to the TJ students as well? What's that going to look like?
So TJ has its own unique curriculum and its own unique scheduling process that they go through with kids. We have not really contemplated applying this to TJ because it is a distinct governance school with its own program of studies and its own curriculum. So we have not contemplated that.
Well, I guess I would encourage that if, if we really feel that this is the, the future of how we want to provide those pathways that is, if there didn't be anything that would prohibit us from extending it to all students.
It, it's just a matter of what they're able to offer in terms of staffing there and what their students are really interested in taking. And that's the student forecasting process, the academic advising process. That I think TJ does a really good job of working with their kids and trying to make sure that their student interests and needs are being met there. But, yeah, absolutely, we can continue to work with them on this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hoff. With that, I want to make one comment, I have one question, and it will be done. Is one comment is, I am most passionate about a, a working with the state to provide the more flexibility or doing away with the 140 clock or policy. Because I think that's going to, you know, once we have that waiver of that flexibility, that's going to open the doors for a lot of our students to pursue many other things they want to pursue. They could be taking, you know, more electives, more science courses, could do more internships outside. That could even result in savings, operating savings on our part, even early graduation. You know, we could have even, you know, quarter credit courses as opposed to a semester or a full year. There are a lot of things we can do. So hopefully, hopefully, we can really work with our legislators to see whether we can have that, have that realized as soon as possible. And then my question is this, you know, earlier, beginning of your presentation, you know, in answering my questions, you said that we need to make our decisions by October timeframe for some of these things to become, to, for us to be able to implement some of these from September 2018, I assume, that based upon today's conversation, on some of the local decisions we need to make, such as science and social studies, do you have enough to make a recommendation for us to make our decisions sometime soon? Or are you going to wait until October?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I feel like the conversation here has kind of indicated consensus for us to move forward and develop some more concrete proposals for the board to look at. So, I mean, that would be my next step as a takeaway, is that we would draft some more formal proposals to make sure that the board saw that and was comfortable with that advocacy moving forward to the state.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to invite more questions, but Ms. Evans, I am, I am...
It's a simple question.
Right, okay.
Since there are some things that are in our own control, is there any reason we couldn't move forward with the things that are in our own control now? I'm thinking of the, the requirement for the third science area, the world history.
Yes.
Yes, and just to confirm, the October deadline, if you will, the timeline is when everything needs to be set so it can be communicated to schools. So we need to have a lot of decisions and proposals given to you between now and the next couple of months, rather than before October.
I'm just thinking that that, you know, that gives us more flexibility on some of these things immediately. And, you know, why, if, if we think that's the direction we want to go in, why not just go ahead and go?
Okay, thank you. With that, is there any next step? Because I haven't heard any next step from anyone. Okay, Ms. McLachlan.
Is there any way we can expedite getting, you know, the full board's strong position, especially since Dr. Duran is working on this Innovation Committee or whatever? I just, I, on this whole SOL assessment, 29 versus 17? I, I just, I, I mean, I would love an updated, I know, but.
The State Board has our, that is their proposal. They're moving forward to the Assembly. So the next step is gonna be to advocate with the Assembly in House Bill 525. And making sure that that passes. If that's the sentiment of the board, that you support that, the next step will be House Bill 525. And whether that's making a board policy statement or individually, but that would be what I would say is the next step.
So what, so my humble advice, and then I'd love to hear what Dr. Presidio wants to say, is Chairman Evans, I know it's gonna be part of our legislative package, but we had the dialogue about how it's voluminous and it's not necessarily specific. I would humbly suggest that, again, a very clear letter sent by, you know, chairman of the board, the school board, on behalf of the entire school board, to our Northern Virginia delegation, saying, "We want to spotlight this for you. This is, you know, something that House Bill 525 speaks exactly to what we're talking about in Portrait of a Graduate, to, you know, Virginia wanting to be a leader in education and reduce unnecessary assessments." I mean, I can tell you that if I got that kind of letter or advocacy coming to me as a board member, I would be most appreciative because there's just so much information that comes to our state delegates and centers. And this one, I can't think of, would be more impactful for our students. So that's my next step request, is we have a specific letter coming from you.
And I would be happy to send such a letter if, if the board agrees that that's, you know, one of the, something that we want to highlight specifically, you know, and, and, and pull out and, and have it be a separate letter to.
For House Bill 525. Dr. Presidio, I know you want.
Let us send you the House bill.
Yes, it's still being, it's still being refined, so that's not been, in terms of some amendment to it.
I think we still have time, and when we get it, we'll get it sent out to you.
The only point I wanted to make is that Michael Malloy has already drafted some previous advocacy on behalf of the school system in conjunction with some other school systems in Northern Virginia. We were requested to weigh in on ESA authorization and implementation at the state level previously. So he had done some work on that. I had worked with him on that back in like late summer, early fall. So now with House Bill 525, it might be a good time to, again, send additional notification and take another position statement. But we have already submitted advocacy to say that we would want the state testing requirements to be aligned with the federal testing requirements and not to exceed them.
Excellent, and thank you for putting it in that language. So if, from what I heard Dr. Presidio say then, this would be very timely once, you know, Dr. Garza even wanted to help. You know, her, her team helps us draft a letter. This is our way of really coming in behind House Bill 525. And there is something to be said when there's a letter that's got 12 elected officials, all the undersigned on it, that it, it just helps reinforce. And so I, I'm seeing positive nods on this.
Yeah, Mrs. McLachlan, could they do this since the 525, HB 525 is being refined? Let's wait until we have the final language first, and then you can certainly bring it to the forum.
No, I don't understand if we're, if we're all here and we all recognize that we want to put our full force behind.
We don't, we don't have HB.
But, but, but we could certainly say, Mr. Moon, that it's the board's advocacy, that staff will have the draft. I don't know who's doing that, mine or yours?
Let's, let's do this. Since this is a next step, if you have a specific next step, say it. And then, and then we will see.
Is it the iPad? All right, so my, my advocacy for the next step is that as the House Bill 525 language is finalized, that Dr. Garza bring it back to the board at the most timely work session possible so that the board can vote to approve the, you know, this, or support submission of a formal letter with the undersigned.
Okay, so Madame Clark, you have that up there? It's the next step. We are talking about next step. I want to see what it says so we can all see.
And it probably won't be refined till about January at the earliest, just so you know.
That January is not, is not Mrs. McLachlan's language.
It's just clarification that we're not gonna bring it back next week or in a month.
Okay, so Mrs. McLachlan, does that capture your advocacy?
I would just add that it's a school board letter of support.
School board letter in support.
Submission of a school board letter of support to the General Assembly. Or to the Northern Virginia delegation. Okay.
Okay, any other next step? Miss, I actually have Ms. Hines next. Okay, Ms. Evans?
So I guess I was, I was suggesting a next step in terms of bringing an agenda item on the two pieces of change that we control ourselves. Is that?
I don't think that's necessary because will we bring it back to you?
And do we know?
When we have it ready.
Well, what are, also, our timeframe is within the next.
Oh, I, I would think, I think right after the winter break, I think we can have.
So you'll be recommending that to us, I see, all right.
Madame Cho, you have a full control of your agenda. Thank you. So any more step, next step? Then we'll go back to this and see whether there's a consensus for this one. If you support, just raise your hand. Okay, that passes. With that, dispersion of the work session is done. Finally, thank you. We'll take a three-minute break, and then we'll go to ERFC.